Good evening. The time is eight thirty and I'd like to call to order the October twenty-second meeting of the Norwalk Common Council. If you'll please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
Mark, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Ms. Najolski-Eichner. Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. President. Mr. Sead. Mr. Wiggins.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. Edie.
Here.
Ms. Winter-Strand.
Here.
Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Sutton.
Present.
Mr. Frer.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan. Ms. Najolski-Eichner. Mr. Sead. Ms. Shanahan. Well, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the regular minutes of the regular meeting, October eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Mr. Burnett, are there any corrections, deletions, omissions? Mr. Frer.
I was not at the October eighth meeting.
Okay. Any further corrections, deletions, or omissions? See no more? All in favor of approving the minutes as corrected? Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have public participation. James?
If you're online and wish to address the council, please raise your hand electronic at this time. There are none, Mr. Mayor.
We have one person in the gallery. Are you wishing to address the common council? Okay, thank you. Next, we have resignations and appointments. The Norwalk Housing Authority has recommended Brenda Penn-Williams for the Fair Housing Advisory Commission. Do I have a motion? Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Brenda Penn-Williams will make a good addition to the Fair Housing Advisory Commission with all the work that she has done in the city. I think this is just one more thing that she can lay her hands on and put her imprint on and make a difference in the city of Norwalk. And we appreciate everything that Ms. Brenda Penn-Williams does.
Thank you. Further comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Smith, did you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to express my support for Brenda for this position. She's a fearless, fearless advocate for the community, and we always appreciate her stepping up, and her voice is just really important for us.
Thank you. Try your minds one more time, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to Mayor's remarks. First, I'd like to welcome Ms. Wenerstrand. Is that how you pronounce it?
Thank you.
To the common council, she's taking the place of Jen McMurr in District C. Now we have a full quorum for District C, and we appreciate your willingness to serve. Thank you. Wenerstrand was administered the oath of office this afternoon by Rick McQuaid, so she's ready to go. So yesterday, the state of Connecticut began the early voting in the state. I'm proudly wearing my "I voted" button today because I voted. Pardon me?
Second-best part of voting.
Second-best part of voting. So you can vote here at City Hall fourteen days for starting November, yesterday, up until November third from ten a.m. to six p.m. That includes weekends and next weekend as well. So City Hall will have extended voting hours on October twenty-ninth and Thursday, October thirty-first from eight a.m. to eight p.m. You can also register when you come to vote at City Hall. Yeah, I voted today, and like I said, it was fast, easy, and I'm happy to report that yesterday we had over nine hundred people come to vote, and today we probably had several hundred more. So I think it's working. People are coming. It also reduced the lines at the polls. And I get on my soapbox for a moment. You know, I encourage people to vote. I know the people here are speaking to the, preaching to the choir. But over the years since going back to the Revolutionary War, people have sacrificed so much to give us the right to vote. We also know there's efforts even today to suppress voter registration, suppress voter opportunity. So we need to get out there. We need to vote. We need to be respectful to our country, be respectful to those that gave their lives so that we would have that right. And you bring your friends out, bring your family out, bring everybody out that you know, and tell them why it's so important to vote. So thank you all, and I look forward to hearing back the results from today's vote and then the rest of the week. So this Saturday, again, we're going to have the annual night fair on Washington Street, the Halloween Night Fair from two p.m. to ten p.m. It's a family-friendly event. It will include pumpkin painting, bounce houses, games, a trick-or-treat trail, and so forth. It will also include a variety of bands, the DJ performances in the evening, and help us spread the word. It was really remarkable last year. We had many, many people come out, and because the word probably spread so rapidly, we're probably expecting many more this year. As you know, you probably saw that finally, at long last, we had the groundbreaking at One Wall Street Place, which has been a really, really challenging project over the years. And it's, I'd like to thank the council, the redevelopment agency, and the private sector, and certainly my corporatian counsel, Mario, for the perseverance in getting this done. It was a long haul. There were many loopholes to jump through, but we did it. And now it's going to happen, and it's going to bring a hundred and fifty-five units of affordable housing, various levels of affordable, starting at eighty percent, going down to twenty percent affordable at Wall Street Place. And this is for teachers and firefighters and waitstaff people and others who couldn't afford to live in Norwalk otherwise. Give them the opportunity to make Norwalk their home where they live, work, and many times even grew up. And this way, they'll have an opportunity to stay. So I'm proud that we were able to do that. We're all committed to increasing housing stability in Norwalk. Not only do we, people need housing to live and thrive, but employers need workers nearby who can do the job that they need done. So that having been said, I will now turn it over to our actual president.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want, I need to make a motion to go out of order for the general, for the economic outlook presentation. I'm going to move that to the end. So could someone second that move? Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. All in favor? Thank you. So with that, we're going to move to community services. Undercoming council committees and reading the council agenda this evening is Mr. Sutton.
He's a lucky one.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Item seven, A, one. Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments, as may be necessary to extend the student practicum internship agreement between the City of Norwalk Health Department and Sacred Heart University Health Professions Program for a period of two years, ending on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Item seven, A, two. Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments, as may be necessary with Elm City Village Incorporated and the House of Darla to provide the vital services for high-risk youth referred to the Juvenile Review Board, the JRV, care coordination, and high utilizers of the community service, services in the amount of fifty thousand dollars administered by the Human Services Department, account number noted. That ends the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. You've heard the consent calendar as read. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? We have one abstent. All right, thank you. Ms. Dixon, you got that one abstent.
Yeah, that brings us back to seven, eight, three, and I believe, yes, Ms. Harris, is somebody going to handle that for you? Mr. Burnett? Okay, thank you. Please note that Ms. Harris has recused herself. Ms. Young is also recusing herself, and I believe Mr. Wiggins and Mr. Sutton. All recusing themselves. And I think that's it. Mr. Wiggins has recused himself, I believe, yeah. So now, Mr. Burnett?
He's still in the meeting.
Who? Mr. Wiggins, would you log out and then come back in? Okay. Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item seven, A, three reads as follows: authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all necessary agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments with the selected nonprofit organizations as outlined in the final ARPA nonprofit grant allocations report in the amount of seven hundred thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to twenty nonprofit organizations to support their recovery efforts and continue service to the Norwalk community as administered by the Community Services Department. Funding source, ARPA account number as noted, four hundred thousand dollars, and account number noted, three hundred thousand dollars.
Excuse me, Mr. Burnett and Mr. Mayor, before you proceed, just a question. How many member council members do you have on right now that have not recused themselves?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight that I know of. Yeah, eight. It's a quorum, by the way.
So I'm asked, that's why I'm asking the question, so.
Yeah, so we're good. And Heather Dunn, we got nine.
We give that, okay.
Okay, so the motion, the item's been read. Is there a motion on the floor? Mr. Burnett, are you moving?
Yes, I moved, I moved, I moved the item, Mr. Mayor, and I'll just briefly talk to it.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. This is the final distribution of ARPA dollars to nonprofit organizations in support of their ongoing recovery from the impact of COVID and the pandemic. The organizations submitted applications where they outlined how they plan to utilize the dollars, and most importantly, the impact of receiving this funding to address issues related to the clients that they serve within their organizations. The process was spearheaded by the Community Services Department utilizing a fair and equitable review process, and the twenty organizations was identified in the backup materials of the, in the Common Council PAC. So if there's any questions, the Chief Lamond Daniels from Community Services here to address any questions, and a detailed presentation was presented at the Community Services Committee last week.
First, do we have any questions before we ask Mr. Daniels to address the council? Mr. Daniels, would you?
Thank you, Mayor, and I will certainly be brief, but just good evening again to members of the council, to the mayor, Rilling. I just really just wanted to speak to the date that our department has stewarded over four million dollars in ARPA funds to the nonprofits, the safety net of our community, which has been used to support critical areas such as housing stability, mental health services, early education, workforce development. And as Councilmember Burnett noted with this final round, we will just, we will be dispersing the last funds of the ARPA, again, all my words wrong today, ARPA Recovery Fund Program. So just want to note, I do have a little bit of money left, and I'll be coming back to you, but it's not part of the ARPA nonprofit program. I just wanted to make that distinction. Marking, making this, completion of this initiative. I do want to again thank Mayor Rilling when, you know, four years ago, when we received our amount. He made a commitment to make sure we support nonprofits. So Mayor, thank the, God bless you. Thank the common council. Two years ago, we distributed one point five. And also, I just want to do a plug. On our website, you all received this, maybe about a month ago. It's on our website, a website called ARPA Funds at Work, and it's also made available to the public to see how the funds from the community services were distributed, and you can find that on our community services website. So thank you again, Mayor Rilling. Thank you again, common council, for your support over the past two years to get the money to the nonprofits so they can serve our most vulnerable residents. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Daniels? I do want to say quickly, first, any comments? Ms. Najolski.
Just very briefly, I wanted to thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you, Chief Daniels. I wanted to thank our incredible nonprofit community. It is actually tremendously impressive what we have done with these dollars, how many people we have been able to serve, how much we've been able to stabilize members of our community that have been very hard-hit by the pandemic. And I will toss in a thanks to our federal delegation, you know, and large our federal government for recognizing the impacts of this pandemic and really helping us funneling money down to us that we can then get out to folks who can provide these direct services. So it really has been a tremendous effort, and I'm grateful to everyone who's made this possible.
Thank you. Any other comments? And just quickly, the ARPA funds that were given to us during the COVID period amounted to thirty-nine million dollars. And as usual, Norwalk did it right. We spread the money equally for infrastructure and other programs, but the nonprofits were really struggling during this time and since. And a lot of their volunteer donations dried up, and this really helped carry them through. So I want to thank the council. I want to thank Mr. Daniels, and I want to thank everybody that had a lot to do with this, working on it. My staff at City Hall did a great job, and I want to thank everybody. So seeing no further questions or hints, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries unanimously. They can call the, thank you, Mr. Daniels. You can bring the people back in? Yeah, Lamond, and people out there, and James, tell them to come back in. And you can text Jalen, and it's Jalen, they can get back on.
I texted Jalen. Mr. Sutton is, Ms. Harris?
Okay, the next item is the under General Business Council President, Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So under General Business, we have Ms. Shannon O'Toole Jean Durco from the Norwalk Greater, the Greater Norwalk Chamber of Commerce, I forget that right, to come and give us a presentation on the economic outlook for the city. And one of the reasons why we kind of asked for this really was as we enter the budget season, we kind of thought it was interesting and good to maybe have some different information about where we are as a city, a community, particularly as each of us live in different areas and our constituents need different things. But collectively, as we go through this process, it's good for us to have information about where we are at this moment in time. And so Ms. Jean Durco has a very condensed presentation to give us, and so I will turn it over to you.
Good evening, council members. I've never spoken from the side of everything before. For those of you who don't know, I serve two terms on the council, and welcome. That was my last seat when I was here, so congratulations and thank you for serving the city. My name is Shannon O'Toole Jean Durco, born and raised in Norwalk. I am honored to serve as the president of the Chamber of Commerce. I took over from Brian Griffin, our long-term president and CEO, in August.
And congratulations.
Thank you. I am committed to driving our mission forward, and obviously that means bettering the city of Norwalk, and working with all of you is a huge part of that. During my time at the chamber, we've welcomed forty new businesses into our membership, showcasing a diverse range of industries. Our goal is to ensure that every member feels supported by our staff and the resources that we provide. As we assess Norwalk's corporate landscape, it's clear that we are in a period of evolution. The rise of remote work has prompted many companies to reevaluate their overhead costs, often resulting in smaller commercial real estate footprints, which I'm sure we're all aware of. Some examples, GE's recent downsized and lease renewal at nine oh one Main Avenue, which resulted in BLT putting two hundred and forty thousand square feet on the market, and another sixty thousand square feet on the market at eight oh one Main Avenue, which is the former Diageo space. However, we are also witnessing expansions from companies like HMTX and relocations into Norwalk from companies like Norseland, which play a critical role in our local economy. It will take many small to medium-sized companies and a few large ones to fill these vacancies. This growth is attracting a younger demographic, contributing to an increase in apartment living throughout the city. One of the most pressing challenges we face is the shortage of housing options across all socioeconomic levels, as highlighted by the Joint ECD Affordable Housing Committee report. While the concept of converting office spaces into apartments or condos is appealing, we must recognize that these projects often take time to materialize, and many of these buildings will first need to be demolished or major construction overhauls before becoming residential. And as the mayor said, I'm happy to see that One Wall Street is online and will be, you know, worked on. That's something that we were voting on when I was on the council many years ago, to see that moving forward is huge and for workforce development. The challenges in recruiting and retaining commercial tenants vary by area. As Darlene said, there's so many different pieces that make Norwalk. Washington Street has had some exciting new tenants. We've done a couple ribbon cuttings down there, and in working with Carolyn down there as the leasing manager, I know they have some exciting things coming in the next, in the first quarter of twenty-five. There's even more opening. We need to explore strategies that enhance tenant retention and draw new ventures to our city. Collaboration among businesses, the chamber, and local government is essential in creating a supportive environment for growth. That's something that I'm trying to do as chamber president. Anytime I meet with somebody new, which I've had the privilege of meeting with a lot of stakeholders in various industries, nonprofits, trying to put as many people together in the room as I can, as we find that we have obviously similar goals to see Norwalk succeed. To prepare for this presentation, I reached out to Scott with Choice Peterson. They are a commercial real estate headquartered in Norwalk, and they have provided this data from COSAR, which is their, the world's largest, largest real estate database. And all of this information is available. I can get this to you either just in this format, or they have tables and graphs and everything, just as a starting conversation point. Wanted to keep this more just discussion. Comparison of Norwalk metrics to other coastal towns of Lower Fairfield County, which Greenwich, Stanford, Darien, Westport, Fairfield, and New Canaan for all the years' data coverage. This is covering office. Norwalk's office availability rate is currently thirty percent, the highest on record in about nineteen years. Stanford's rate has been similar to Norwalk's over the last six years. These rates are more than double the average of the rest of the peer group. Norwalk's average asking rent for office space is considerably lower than the rest of the peer group. For industrial properties, asking rent is around fifteen dollars a square foot net, and vacancy levels are around five percent, which is very in line with Stanford's numbers as well. And for retail, Norwalk vacancy rate is at a relatively healthy five percent and has ranged from two point three to seven percent over the last eighteen years. This rate is above that of surrounding towns, but has historically been in the middle of this peer group. As the Chamber of Commerce, we're in a position to advocate for initiatives that benefit remote workers, small business, large businesses. That's my job, which I love to do every day, to make sure that I'm outreaching as much as possible. We're trying to reach out and incentivize small businesses to know that we're here for them. We have had a lot of businesses who joined during COVID and didn't get the full chamber welcome for, you know, multitude of reasons. So as we are outreaching in the community with Kevin, our new director of membership, he's making sure that people know that, you know, they can do a ribbon cutting. They can do all these things that maybe just we weren't able to do in the past for our members, but it also highlights the businesses that have joined the community. And something that I'm working for the chamber to be more immersive is active in community events. I think we're very good at hosting our own events, but we need people to know who we are and how to get to us. So I'm trying to make sure that we're becoming more active in the community. In conclusion, the future of Norwalk's corporate landscape depends on our ability to adapt to these new realities. By addressing housing shortages and enhancing our commercial recruitment strategies, we can foster a vibrant, sustainable community. I encourage all stakeholders to collaborate and innovate in tackling these challenges.
Thank you. Very well done. Do we have any questions of Ms. Jean Durco, O'Toole Jean Durco? Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mayor. I first just want to thank you for a couple of reasons. One, for stepping up and becoming the chamber's new president and taking, and really hitting the ground running. Starting a dialogue like this is incredibly important, especially since we are, as you just laid out, I think, in very persuasive terms, that we're in a real flex moment, you know, in terms of, especially in light of the revaluation that took place last year. It does, the changing landscape is both a stark reminder of sort of how out of balance our tax base is between residential and commercial, but also it's an enormous opportunity in a way to really change Norwalk's economic landscape from now into the future. I do think that one of the things you highlighted, and I really, if you have not read the report that was presented jointly to the Norwalk Affordable Housing Committee and the Economic Community Development Committee, Economic Community Development Committee regarding housing in the city, it is a must-read. And it's a must-read for the reasons you've laid out and how there are challenges, especially at every level of the socioeconomic economics strata, especially those who are, you know, working people here in our city. They are being, that housing is an enormous challenge for them. That's an enormous challenge for us. I do think that one thing for the future that I hope you can help us with is figuring out all of the ways government at all three levels can help push the boulder up a notch. Because one of the things that we need are innovative and creative solutions to not only incentivize businesses to grow and thrive in Norwalk, but also make sure that they have every opportunity to do so and that they're not just shut down because of skyrocketing rents on those lines. So I do think that recommendations of the business community of how we can best serve them is something that's going to be of paramount importance to us as we consider how to regroup and rebuild our economic landscape and build upon the progress that's been made over the last few years. So I just, I'm so appreciative of the time you've taken to do this, and I'm really excited for what happens next.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Najolski-Eichner?
Thank you so much. Thank you again, Mr. Goldstein. My thanks. Building on what he was talking about with housing, I also was really struck by your analysis of the shift in the commercial landscape, right? A thirty percent vacancy is really substantial. And certainly from, the implication, I think, of your presentation is that, you know, you're not anticipating that we're going to return to the levels of people in office that might drive that vacancy down. you're not anticipating that we're going to return to the levels of people in office that might drive that vacancy down.
Based on what we're seeing with new businesses coming in, no, at least joining the chamber, it's definitely a lot of smaller businesses, somebody starting something post-COVID, you know, finding a new path. But we have not had Wegmans joined is our, the largest that has joined since I've been on the team. But other than that, it's the zero to five employee range is what we're seeing.
And I think that is really helpful for us to think about, again, you know, within the context of our tax base, because again, this is sort of the context for this presentation is to help us really begin thinking about what are the implications for our tax base, where should we, you know, where can we anticipate growth and where can we not? And it certainly suggests that I, that our commercial sector, we are going to need to think about how we can be more creative, how we can, as you say, you know, repurpose some of these spaces for residential, you know, things that are going to grow our tax base. And I'm just, again, very well aware of the challenges of conversion of commercial to rental, I know, or to residential. I know that is something that's been thought and written about quite a lot in many contexts. But are you aware of anyone in Norwalk who is currently contemplating such a conversion? Or, you know, is there any one that's sort of has get emerged as a conversation about a particular site or folks that considering that option?
No, just big picture of, you know, the Merit Seven property, because that is, you know, so many big buildings, so many big tenants were in that space, that conceptionally that could happen, but it's not going any further than that.
Babas, thank you, I think this is very helpful to get us, our juices really thinking about some of the directions we're going to have to grapple with in the next few years.
Thank you.
Mr. Ms. Harris, then, Mr.?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. O'Toole. Just kind of a follow-up question, again, we do appreciate you coming and sharing this time with us and giving us some things to process. Has the chamber on your side thought of any recommendations or creative ways that the city can kind of spearhead how the repurposment of these large spaces? Since that is our reality, that we have these large vacant spaces. I know you said you started the conversation, but are there any recommendations that you can give to us at this time?
At this moment, no. I took over August 1st and was a team of myself until
You're taking so long.
I know. I've, my new director of membership joined three weeks ago, so I've been like just barely keeping my head above water. I might have a much better thought-out answer for you in the beginning of '25.
And I think, not speaking for everyone, but speaking for everybody, I think we would be excited to hear those recommendations. We all have our areas of expertise, but we would highly lean on the chamber to see what the recommendations would be, just to make sure that we're all stepping in the same direction and aligned with the same goal, which is to continue to support and have Norwalk grow. So whenever you get your footing, we're not, we're not going.
I know where to find you guys.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez?
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, just like a side note on top of just kind of piggyback off or back off some of what we're saying. So I know the State Department and the FTC filed a joint legal briefing to combat some of the algorithmic collusion in the housing market. So it'd be nice to see what sort of recommendations can be provided to the city to be able to encourage, you know, or welcome the revenue from construction, while at the same time encouraging transparency in the way they price some of the housing units, especially when it comes to like the property managers. So it'd be nice to see, you know, what sort of things the city can do to be able to kind of still be able to encourage revenue in construction, but at the same time ensure that the market is being treated in a competitive way. So.
Mr. Frayer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. O'Toole, those are very, very informative comments that you made. Just picking up again on the, on the vacancy rate. Is there any plans to put together a group of the landlords, the owners of some of these properties that could explore some creative ideas, and we've all kind of talked about it a little bit, but you know, putting together a team of members of the chamber that are property owners that could start to look and explore different ideas, creative ideas to, to reduce that vacancy rate and possibly do that transition to residential.
There hasn't been, but I'd happy to, you know, facilitate that. I definitely know some of the players that come to, you know, a lot of our meetings and are engaged in this topic. So I'd be happy to put people, you know, in the room together. Our offices are always open, you know, for meetings and for people to collaborate. And I'd be welcome to, to, you know, help get that going.
Okay, another thing, I just wanted to know, where does the, does the, has the chamber taken a position on the takeover of Nuance and by Northwell? Because Norwalk Hospital is one of our largest employers in the state, in the city, obviously. Without that, that acquisition going through, some, there's some talk that the combination of the two might be at jeopardy.
I, all the announcements for that were, they predate me being the president. I don't think that Brian came out and spoke in support either way. I know that they're working very hard, the hospital CEO is on our board, and they're looking to do everything they can to get that to go through, as it would really benefit all of us to have a larger network available, and it would reduce costs and open up additional providers to us. So I know that they're working diligently to get that done.
Has the chamber endorsed that combination?
No, and I don't think that they, I don't know that we need to, I mean, they're, they're doing their negotiations. It's not, I don't think we need to make an endorsement. We want to see the residents of Norwalk have access to the best healthcare they can. And from everything of my understanding, the merger would benefit our community. So we would want to see a benefit, but we haven't endorsed a merger, no.
Okay.
The city did write a letter of support, by the well, by the way, in the Northwell acquisition of Norwalk Hospital, as well as writing a letter, hopefully giving the Norwalk Hospital the opportunity to increase their cardiac care, because as you know, right now, somebody in cardiac arrest, they can just bring him back to level one care to stabilize him, and they have to take them to Bridgeport or Danbury. So it's very important for the city of Norwalk as we're growing. And Mr. Jocelyn Eichner?
So just one more follow-up question. I did note in your list that the industrial property is currently at a much lower vacancy rate. You know, among your new members, the new businesses you're seeing, you know, these zero to five startups, how many of them would you say are industrial or industrially oriented as opposed to sort of office, commercial oriented? I know that sort of categorically, but are we seeing an increase in sort of innovative industrial startups as well as sort of, you know, innovative commercial startups?
Not a lot of industrial, only one is coming to mind, and they're, yeah, no, we've had, we have a lot of service organizations, we have a lot that, you know, don't have a brick and mortar, we have a lot. I'm only thinking of one is a glass company is the only industrial company that I can think of. And they're, you know, a 30-year established business that moved from Fairfield.
So the, so the current stability in the industrial space is really, is driven largely by longtime businesses.
Yeah, existing, yes.
Okay, thank you, that's also helpful, understand, I appreciate that.
Mr. Capola?
Maybe not as much of a question, maybe a suggestion, something you could maybe do if you do come back to report to the council at some point. I'd be interested to know from property owners, particularly those larger property owners, that, that the shopping classes, office buildings, et cetera, if the reduction in taxes that they may have received as a result of the latest revaluation have helped them with their bottom line, because obviously taxes are either paid by the landlord on a gross lease or passed through to a tenant on a triple net lease. So either way, the landlord is able to benefit from being able to, by having lower taxes, by being able to charge a higher gross rent or higher base rent on a triple net lease. I think in an honest moment, some property owners would probably confine with you that by having lower taxes, it allows them to be more profitable. I'd be interested to know feedback now that, you know, the revaluation, the first tax bills that came out of the '23 revaluation were July 1 to '24. The second half of that bill will be January 1 of '25. So I'd be interested to know if some of the larger commercial property owners are seeing the reduction in taxes help them with their bottom line, their bottom line being their net operating income at the property. So it'd be, it'd be interesting for us to get some feedback on that.
Okay.
Also, my, drawing a blank, but yesterday's hour mentioned the company that is moving from Stanford to Norwalk, a large company that's going to be occupying some of the space at Merit Seven. It looked like there was several hundred employees and several thousand, many thousands of square feet at Merit Seven.
Okay.
It's something, I hate to say it, because it's something like Jowlsburg, maybe the cheese?
Yarlesburg Cheese.
Yeah, okay, I didn't want to say the cheese place.
Yes.
But it was Jowlsburg, yes.
Yes, um, yes, I'm sorry, I missed that article in the hour, but it was brought up at a ambassador meeting we had this morning. I wasn't sure if it was out for public, but yeah, it's Yarlesburg Cheese. Yeah, so they're taking, I think Sabrina said 60,000 square feet of that space.
And the Choice Peterson, I get the report, I think every quarter. And since I've been in office and many years before, I think this is the highest percentage of vacancies, but it's not unique to Norwalk, it's all over. And one other thing I failed, forgot to mention when I was talking about the ARPA funds, you know, a lot of these small businesses received business grants, business loans during COVID from ARPA, and that helped, many of them survived, they might not have otherwise survived if it wasn't for the funds that they were received from the city, as well as homeowners getting facade improvement grants and so forth. So just another indication, I think, you know, Norwalk was really concerned about small businesses, the homeowner, making sure that we give people the resources that they can stay here. And I know I'm on my bully pulpit, but that's what I think is very important to note that. Any further comments or questions or discussion?
So just one more thing, Mayor, you just, they do, Choice Peterson does, I think it's quarterly or maybe twice a year, like a poster size, and it's very, it's a great visual. I'd be happy to get some of those dropped off so you guys could see those. They kind of do like a box of each property that's open and what, how much vacancy it has and that. So it's a really nice visual to see exactly what we're looking at, so I'll get some of those to the office.
If you can get those to the office, my, the city, the assistant city clerk will make sure that council members receive them.
Okay, perfect, got it.
Any further comments or discussion or questions?
Mayor, if we're about to end this, I just want to say thank you so much for this. I don't know, I think this is the first time that we've actually done this, and I think that we should continue to do this on a regular basis, but we'll determine what that regular basis is. But I want to thank particularly Josh Goldstein and Majority Leader Nora Najelski-Eichner. The three of us, we kind of put our heads together and just kind of came up with some questions, but thought that this was a good idea, and the rest of the council believed it and thought it was a good idea, and I think we need to continue this, but I so appreciate this first meeting and look forward to more. I think you've gotten some, some, some marching orders on what we need and what we're looking for, and so I know that we will have you back and be real soon. So thank you very much.
Okay, now what do we do, Ms. Shannon is not here. What do we do? Yeah. All in favor? Any opposed? We're in favor, we're adjourned at 8:14.